Received from councillors Frank Prendergast and Sarah Morton and from advisory member Elaine Balca. So can I move first to item number one, declarations of interest? Do members have any interests to declare relating to the items of business set out on the agenda? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Item two, minutes of the last meeting. Can I refer members to the minutes of the last meeting at pages one to fourteen of the agenda? And can I firstly move that we approve the minutes for accuracy? Is that agreed? Okay, thank you. And secondly, are there any matters arising from the minutes of the last meeting? I shall take your overwhelming silence to assume that there are no matters arising from the minute. And move on to item three, which is the update from our cabinet member. So firstly, can I refer members to pages fifteen to twenty of the agenda? And invite councillor Barbara Murray to introduce her update report. Over to you councillor Murray.
Thank you, Chair. Um, can people hear me okay? Yeah, okay. And I'm not going to say too much about the report, but I'm happy to take questions at the end. I think the significant uh developments since the last select is the establishment of the Employment and Skills Board for the Liverpool City Region. I've put quite a bit of information in about that. And of course, all the government announcements about um extra funding for various things, which I think we all need to be fully aware of. We're not quite sure how it's going to work out. Um, but we are very keen to be looking closely, especially at young people who are at risk of unemployment going forward. And the other thing I draw attention to is the fact that schools are shut. And also our adult learning services have all moved to a hundred percent online. This is quite a difficult situation for the teachers and the trainers. Uh, because they are now having to teach in a way they've never been trained to teach in. And I think this is significant, especially when, because what's of interest to us here is careers training. And and what's been really good is the board has agreed a task and finish group, which was which has now met twice and meets again next week. Um, to look very closely at the careers offers offer across the region. Uh, but I think careers will be one of the things that will have suffered because of lockdown, both in schools and elsewhere. So I'm pleased to report, because I have it on good authority, that all the apprenticeships at Liverpool City College have actually been protected and upheld. But other than that, apprenticeships have been hit very hard in the city. I am working with a small group of people to try and develop um a scheme of apprenticeships for youth workers. Because we know we have a gap, we don't have many youth workers in the city anymore. And and we do feel young people are significantly impacted by Covid. And in all things, it's it's this, isn't it? The lockdown, which is nearly twelve months, in my opinion, um has impacted everybody. But I think we can't yet even measure or come to terms with what that impact really is. And so in all things that we are doing, I think we have to try and be prepared uh to hit the ground running, to provide support and better opportunities for everybody, not for the young people. Because of course, the unemployment will hit all age groups. But I think, as I started with, the Employment and Skills Board, I'm impressed by it. And the number of businesses on it, we can talk directly to them. And the other point I would just make tonight, because I think uh she's here, Katie Spall, we've just appointed, is going to do a lot of work for us around careers, schools and businesses. So that's another positive story we can add um from the report tonight. And I don't want to talk too much about it. I'm not feeling great, to be honest. And but I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Murray. Appreciate your uh your attendance tonight and appreciate the work that you've done on that. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Barbara off the back of the report? Yeah, bring in Maria first. Maria Tooleman, please councillor Tooleman.
Thanks Chair, thanks Barbara. Um, I just had to, I've just gone through the report. I just had to inquire about the Good Business Festival.
Yes.
Good Business Festival. I just wondered.
Sorry, go on. No, go Maria, finish your question, sorry.
I just wondered, uh, ha- uh, is there a budget for that? And how and what budget does that come out of?
My understanding is it's funded by the city region. Um, and I think my last report might have been misleading, because at that point in time, we were hoping it would be a physical place. Uh, and there was a lot of talk about that. It is again going to be online. Um, but I think it'll work well. Um, we've all learned, haven't we, about doing things online and how best to present? And I just think I put the link there for people, please register, please attend. And please uh pay attention to that. One thing that isn't in my report, which you may also be interested in, is the um charter that was launched last week by uh the Metro Mer, which is really very important as well. Um, remiss of me, because it was after I'd sent my report over that we we attended the launch. So I'll talk more about that probably next time. But yeah.
Okay, so it's not, it's not funded by us, um, Barbara?
No, no, no.
Funded by the the city region, so it's just for our interests, really?
It is. But the thing is, that, you know, this, this select committee really speaks to um the employment and skills of LCR. That's where the funding is coming in predominantly. So it's a very important um connection. So, you know, we we have to look at the whole piece of the mayor's aside when it comes to business, employment and skills.
Yeah, so they do the evaluation, do they, the Liverpool City Region?
Yes.
Thanks Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Any other questions for councillor Murray? I'd just like then to ask Barbara about uh the Kickstart scheme. Because I know national government scheme, obviously. And with all that that entails around the fact that, you know, they have incompetence and delays and a whole ma- manner of U-turns that they do. We'd heard originally back in September of last year, so a good five, six months ago, that this was going to get rolled out. And I'm hearing from employers myself that there are still teething problems here. So I just want to hear from you. What what's your sense of the impact that that's going to make for the city? And and do you have any any concept of how Liverpool City Council and the Combined Authority working together can smooth over some of those difficulties that I know employers are are experiencing?
Yeah, I think we're hoping it will now roll out in April. Um, but my understanding is not as many businesses as we would have liked uh are currently engaged with us. The point would be, because we're an intermediary, we have to um monitor, if you like, the quality of placements. And the whole point should be that these will be high-quality placements. We would also really like to see lots of those placements literally in the community um to give support. So we've got two types of support, if you like. We're supporting the young people with the opportunity um to have a work experience. But we're also supporting the community to grow its capacity at a time when um they're struggling. So there's that. Uh, this is an example, to refer back to what I was just trying to say to Maria. This is an example, I think, of where we work really very closely um with the city region and the D W P. And we really do have to work well together. And and as I say, the board, the Employment and Skills Board is cited on this. And the portfolio holders are also cited on this. And believe you me, um all the portfolio holders are very keen, um how how can I say this, because I have to include myself in this group, um quite brutal in our scrutiny. So believe you me, we are on this. And we are very keen that we roll out as quickly as possible the very best of opportunities for our young people. Uh, I would just draw attention to one thing that we have noticed, is because it is sixteen plus, sixteen to twenty-four or twenty-five, um you have to be on universal credit to actually get on Kickstart. And we're looking closely at that, because it, there's an awful lot of young people sixteen to eighteen who are just not entitled to that claim. And so that would almost bar them from being involved. But we are hoping to, as Liverpool City Council, a comms exercise, advising all the younger people who are entitled to claim universal credit to do so, to access Kickstart. And also too, I think there may be an argument for us as a city region to go back to government and say, this isn't good enough. You're you you're ruling out an awful lot of young people who will ultimately, if they don't get this kind of opportunity, probably become NEAT.
Okay, thank you very much. Whilst we've been addressing that, has anybody thought of any more questions that they would like to put to councillor Murray? Bring councillor Tooleman back in, and then councillor Shortall.
Thanks Chair. Um, Barbara, I know, um, these are really difficult times, especially for sixteen plus. Um, and with the NEATS as well. There is a programme, there isn't there? I'm sure Elaine will back me up. Uh, that's called Positive Directions, which is a sixteen-plus programme that supports people sixteen plus into work.
Yes.
Um, so so most of the programmes don't include young people, but that one actually does. Um, and I didn't see that on the, on the list that's um that's supported by the D W P. So just maybe we could add that one in.
Yes, certainly, we'll do.
Thanks Barbara, thanks Chair.
You're welcome.
Councillor Shortall next, please.
Yeah, yes, thanks Chair. Thanks for the report, Barbara. Uh, I just want to say, uh, on page nineteen at the bottom, we've extended the Ways to Work Programme till the thirty-first of March. But we get a a a report, a filed report of how uh good the programme's been and, you know, an evaluation report and where we've made mistakes, where we can learn and what can we build on from that in the future. Thanks, Barbara.
Absolutely. These are very closely monitored. Um, and Elaine does present us with great reports on this. Um, and, you know, you will guess all of that. It'll come through Cabinet and then it'll come here. Or it'll be the other way around, really. I think it'll come here and then Cabinet. Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, final round, anybody, any more questions? Okay, no problem at all. Can I move then that councillor Murray be thanked for her update? And that the information is noted? Is that agreed? Thank you. Item four, that's the the Draft Select Committee annual report for the last twelve months. And this is on pages one to two of your supplementary agenda, which was sent on Monday and which you should have there with you. Um, this is my assessment of how the year's gone for the committee. It's been a very truncated programme of work because of the obvious reasons. Um, but nevertheless, um, I think we've done as as good amount of scrutiny of the work that the council and the city, the Combined Authority has has been doing, as has been possible in the circumstances. And I just want to say one thing on this report, which I didn't include. Um, but back in March of last year, I was being told that the final meeting of the last municipal year was to be cancelled because we couldn't meet in person. I made the suggestion to committee services that it would be a nice way of moving into the twenty-first century if perhaps we could hold a meeting using some sort of online video conferencing software. And the response I got back from committee services was that they didn't know what I was talking about and it sounded like some foreign language. So I think, given that, eleven months have passed and we're in a completely different world and just hats off to committee services for the work that they have done and that they're getting up to speed so quickly. So can I move that the report be submitted for inclusion into the annual scrutiny report for the last year? Is that agreed? Okay, great, thank you. Um, item five, um, business grants. So this is again is on your supplementary agenda. Um, this is on pages three to eleven. I'd asked for a piece of work to be prepared and to be presented to the committee on the work that the city council and the local authority has done throughout the pandemic to suppo- to support employers and to support the city economy. And so can I invite Darren Hardy to outline the report? Over to you, please Darren.
Thank you, Chair. I know you're on a clock, so I'll be brief. There's only two things I want to say really, Chair. One is to put on record my thanks and praise to all the staff in my team uh and to Martin Youngnet and his team for the sterling efforts that they've produced in the past ten months. Um, over twenty thousand grants given out, um, over a hundred and fifty million pounds worth of grants given out. And that's on top of their day jobs. It it's been amazing. People work weekends long into the night to get those grants approved. So I I just want to draw committee's attention to that, Chair, I think, to an amazing achievement. Uh, probably more importantly though, Chair, at the end of the report, and we touch on this, um, the number of grants that government have given out have been significant and complex and forever changing. Um, our view is, and businesses says to us all the time, it's a very, very confusing grant landscape. And it's difficult for businesses to navigate. And we do all that we can to help. But very often, we only find out about new grants at the same time that businesses do. Uh, we've made this point to government on a number of occasions and suggested that any grant programmes moving forward need to be significantly simplified. And my colleagues in Bays support that view and attempting to take that forward through government. Other than that, Chair, I'm just here for any questions that members may have.
Okay, thanks for the outline and thanks for the the preparation of the report as well. Um, can I firstly bring in councillor Tooleman, please, to ask her a question?
Hi Darren, thanks for your hard work. And I know, um, you have worked extremely well. And Barton and his team have been really supportive as well. So a big thank you to to all of you. Um, I just wondered, I know, I'm sure you gave me this before. How many businesses do you know have we helped, Darren? And how many do you think are withering on the vine without any help?
Um, it's difficult, because although we've given out over twenty-four thousand grants, uh, some businesses have had multiple grants. So my estimation is we've probably helped about sixteen to eighteen thousand businesses overall. That that's a changing picture as more and more grants are given out by the day. That's a significant amount of money to a significant amount of businesses. But we still know that um there are businesses that have received nothing uh through any of the processes. Uh, and uh the latest round of grants that started next week, sorry, last week, attempts to address that by opening the gates to a much wider group of businesses as long as they can demonstrate that they've um lost more than forty percent of their projected income because of Covid. But that will still mean that there are businesses that form through the gaps. I I'm really proud of the fact that I think we've done quite a lot of work to help the self-employed, to help home businesses wherever possible. And I know all of the council teams work on the basis of how our job is to get as many businesses through this process as we can. Um, how many jobs might we ultimately lose and how many businesses? I think that's still to be determined and will depend very much on how long lockdown goes on for and what government's route out of lockdown is, uh, and also what grants government are willing to give as we move out of lockdown. Because businesses will need support, even in the unlikely event that, you know, government suddenly fired a starting pistol and said everything's back to normal now. Um, but we're we're hopeful, certainly in conversation with colleagues with Bays, that it does look like the grants programmes will continue in some form afterwards.
Thanks Darren. Thanks Chair.
Can I bring in councillor Shortall and after William councillor Miller as well? I've got your hand up. So councillor Shortall first, please.
Yes, thanks for the report Darren. Uh, I want to specifically talk about page ten, the taxi grant. Can you just clarify for me? Um, it says here, an affair of the grant of two hundred pounds paid driver was announced on the ninth of February twenty twenty-one. Who has given that grant out for the fairer two hundred pounds? And what is the uptake of this uh application for the grant scheme with the taxi drivers?
Thanks councillor Shortall. Um, the the money's coming from the Combined Authority through what's called additional restrictions grant. So they've made the decision they want to give all the taxi drivers across the city region an additional two hundred pounds. So that money will flow from the Combined Authority through us to the taxi drivers, because that's the simplest route for us to give that grant out. Um, we we launch the process, I can't say the precise number of of taxi drivers that have applied so far. But I know in the first round of grants, it was heading towards three thousand. So we expect roughly the same number again to 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 apply and benefit. Uh, obviously, that'll run through a number of of weeks and months to get all those grants out to allow the taxi drivers to apply. Um, I I know, you know, taxi drivers will will probably think it's it's not enough. But um the sheer scale of taxi drivers in the city region, I think there's there's fifteen thousand uh registered across the city region. We start attempting to give large sums of money to those taxi drivers, very quickly, the little amount of cash that we've had from government will run out. I hope that's helpful.
Thanks. I've tried to speak to a couple of taxi drivers who, who, you know, and they're grateful for it. The money coming out just in time, so they are grateful for it.
Okay, uh councillor Miller, next, please.
Yeah, it's kind of an update there. Thanks Darren and thanks for all the work that you guys are doing behind the scenes. Uh, just so people know, um, I know that the work that they are doing, sometimes the applications may take twenty minutes but could take four hours and more just to process and to appraise. It's a big job, less staff, working from home, managed well, doing a great job. To answer councillor Tooleman's question about specifics, in lockdown one, the grants that were awarded were close to nine thousand of the eighteen and a half thousand businesses in the city. There are fifty-two thousand businesses and a bit more for the city region. And some of the grants are now coming are actually combined authority, not just local authority grants. The uh Martin Youngnets released a report a few days ago. Um, that in the current lockdown, that four thousand two hundred and fifty-two businesses in Liverpool out of the eighteen and a half thousand have received about thirty million in grants in the last couple of weeks. So that's a big number. I just imagine the the kind of, the hours it takes to do each each set. What I was disappointed with, if we have got eighteen and a half thousand or we had eighteen and a half thousand businesses before lockdown, before the pandemic last year, and only nine thousand were eligible because they pay or are listed as the business rates payer, they might get relief and therefore don't pay. That's not good enough. So actually, we should congratulate the Combined Authority and the work that Darren and the other authorities and the business growth managers uh are doing in that we were the first region in the country to give grants to the excluded, to the forgotten, that got no help at all from the government or elsewhere. And the Combined Authority and the authorities have actually done an amazing job. And they're actually doing it again in the new lockdown with further discretionary grants. It still doesn't cover enough. And we still, as politicians, uh have to, all of us, lobby government with the new budget, et cetera. Do you know, we still don't know where the money's coming from, from for the businesses who Darren and Martin and their teams have already helped with lockdown three. But you know what? That's come to an end. That money's come to an end now. So actually, where's the next tranche of money whilst we continue in lockdown that everybody assumed would have been finished by now? But we're still sitting there. So all those businesses who got their six weeks grant from January forward, that ended the middle of February, they got their business rate grants, that's all ended. So if they continue in lockdown, I hate to see it. But evidence is showing, and you see different figures, if you're a wet-led pub, that means you don't provide food, if you're a nightclub and so on, you are between seventy and ninety percent likely to go out of business in the next month. That was the evidence from last November. And then what about the cafes and the restaurants and whatever? And people have said and given some, maybe some justifiable criticism. I don't think it is justifiable. Why are we, and the city region, assisting the hospitality and leisure trades? Well, they're the ones that have been told to close. Others haven't. So the closed businesses have been getting lots of help. But what we have to recognise, colleagues, is that almost forty-nine percent of the business rates of about a hundred and ninety-three million pounds, almost forty-nine percent of it comes from hospitality and leisure. And if they go out of business, imagine how that impacts on libraries, children's centres, schools and crisis payments, et cetera. We don't want that to happen. So we've got to do our best as a Combined Authority, as a city, to support all businesses. But the hospitality, hospitality and leisure and retail trades have had help. But when you give somebody three thousand pound grants, it might pay one month's rent. But it won't pay the electricity. It won't pay the water rates. It won't pay the phone bill. And it doesn't cover all of the wages. And that's a big issue for me. So we have got to do our very best, colleagues, all of us, to keep lobbying government and reminding it's not about big business. It's about small business. And they account for the majority of our employment across this region. And I don't want to see ninety or seventy percent of our pubs go out of business. I don't want to see the up to forty percent of our hospitality businesses go out of business because, one, it loses jobs and they employ sixty thousand staff in the city region. So if you imagine forty percent of those businesses go, how many jobs that loses us? So we've got to really fight hard, using the political term fight, to kind of campaign and lobby and remind everybody that we might be a brilliant city, but let's not ignore us, let's not forget us, as they are doing now with all of those people that are not getting help, whether there's a musician or a freelancer or a creative or a home-based business. But you know what? Liverpool and Liverpool City Region have been the first to help those individuals. And I'm pleased that we are doing that. And that's down to Ma- Martin and Darren behind the scenes doing lobbying. With the Combined Authority, finally, taxi drivers need more help. And I know that Ian Byrne is on this line and he will tell you that he's been lobbied on a daily basis by taxi drivers who've had no help. And two hundred pound is helpful, but it's not enough when we're able to give fifteen hundred pound to somebody that hires a chair in a barber's or in a hairdressing salon. What about these taxi drivers that keep hospitality going? I'll finish there, but thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Miller. And it's heartening to see your passion remain undimmed in the final months of having you as a council colleague. So thank you very much indeed for articulating that so so clearly. Um, Darren, I would like to ask specifically on one po- one point of your report. Um, point eight, point three, this is feedback from businesses on future grants. Eight point three says, it's likely that not all businesses have claimed every grant that is available to them. Now, that's always going to be the case. You're always going to miss some people. Some people don't realise that they're eligible for grant funding. What I'd like to know from yourself is your assessment of firstly, how we can increase the take-up rate? Secondly, if there is a surplus when grant streams close, what is, what happens with that money? And thirdly, if this impacts on the prospects of getting any further government finance for future grant schemes? So what can, what can we do about it? What's the impact? And what happens to any? And what happens to any surplus that's left?
Thanks Chair. Um, what, what can we do about it? The, the second hospitality, leisure and retail brackets expanded grant that we ran, there was a really low take-up of that grant. And although we pushed comms out significantly, we just were not getting the applications through that anybody expected. And that was across the city region. Um, in response to that, for the third round which launched last week, uh, we, there was a massive push on comms. But what we did was to increase the number of businesses and the type of businesses that could apply and attempt to get as many businesses through that route as, as we should. Um, we also, and I think it went live either today or yesterday. Um, we, we've produced a widget in, in, in partnership with the combined authority that a business can go on and answer at this stage, I think it's four very simple yes, no questions. And then tells the business, these are the grants that you may be eligible for and he is where to apply for them. Um, that sounds really straightforward, but I, I can't, um, I, I can't overestimate the, the amount of mental torture it took to take this really complex grant landscape and get it down to four questions. Um, so that's gone live. Hopefully that will be really helpful for businesses moving forwards. Um, in terms of what happens with the grants, it depends on the different types of grants. Uh, where governments are making grants available through the business rate system, they will essentially assign a cutoff point and any business that has not applied by that date. If we've still got money left over, that money goes straight back to government and there's, there's nothing we can do about that. Um, for local restriction support grants open, which is a discretionary grant that we receive, governments have not set a formal timetable for that grant to be utilized, say that they have said they want it utilized immediately. With the indication that probably by March or April that grant has not been spent, the money will be taken back from us. Um, the, the third type of grant, the additional restrictions grant, which is the money that flows to the combined authority, we have, or rather the combined authority have, open until March twenty twenty two to spend that money. Um, on the basis of what governments have currently told us. In conversation with, with, with Bays, their indication has been that the quicker that local authorities can spend money, the better a case it makes for them to go back to treasury and say, can we have some more cash please? Um, so we are doing our utmost to get the money spent as quickly as we possibly can. One of the things that um maybe prevents us from acting at the speed that we'd like is that as the grants programs have progressed, the audit regimes attached to those grant programs have started to catch up. So when we did discretionary grants in, in April, May last year, government's view was, get the money out the door, don't worry about the process. We're now in a position where there are significant amounts of ordered checks that are required to do on every grant application that we receive and it slows things down. Um, and I was on a meeting with businesses this afternoon and one of the things I urged them to do was make sure they put their grant application incorrectly the first time around. Because I think as Gary, as custom indicated before, um, that there are times when we are spending five, six hours with one grant applicant to try and get them through the process. But of course, that means that's maybe forty or fifty very quick applications that you're not doing during that time. Uh, so I hope that, that's helpful Chair, but I know it's, it's complex and to be honest, it's a bit of a moving feast at present.
Okay, thank you. I've got a follow-up on that. Um, you mentioned how that there would be clawback if the money isn't spent. And that the audit requirements mean that obviously there's, there's hoops that we need to jump through. Do, are we as a local authority in charge of the, um, of the eligibility criteria for the various grants, grant schemes and grant streams? And if it assists in getting money out the door, can we lead or do we have the autonomy to remove or to reduce eligibility criteria in order to open up grants to a wider range of businesses?
Um, there are a set of base criteria that governments insist every grant meets. And some of that's about state aid, some of it's about size of business, some of it's about evidence that business has been impacted by um Covid. Uh, it does vary slightly between the different grant streams. Um, however, if we then want to target um certain groups of businesses, so for instance, uh, in the latest round, we said that any business that's lost more than forty percent of its income um may apply and be given a grant. Now, um, that, that's one to make sure that, that the money's being targeted in the right way. But be, because we've, we've, we've decided that we want to target, we then need evidence that the business has lost that forty percent of income. And therefore we're, we're obliged to collect evidence and review that evidence as part of the grant application process.
You're obliged to do that?
You're obliged to do that or is it just?
Oh, I've got.
No, we've.
Actually, are you obliged by government to do that or, or are we able to do that ourselves?
Um, we are obliged by government to do that. Any grant criteria that, that, that there in the application round forms part of the audit process. And therefore we have to then have an evidence base. Um, the other thing Chair as well is, and this has increasingly been on the radar of government and therefore for us in the past four or five months, there have been a number of high-profile cases of fraud associated with business grants. Um, and we do see fraudulent applications, some of them quite clever and sophisticated fraudulent applications. Um, so there, there is a need to pay a good degree of attention to some of the grants that we get.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Darren? Okay, okay councillor Miller? You're on mute councillor Miller.
Thank you.
Not to have everything to say, Count.
The, we should recognise that the government is very good at releasing through the national newspapers a, a new grant scheme. And the city councils, the local authorities know about it and then get inundated. And I get inundated about requests for how do we apply for this money the government announced today, last week, two weeks ago. What the government haven't been good at councillor um Byrne is actually giving us the money straight away. So they are announcing it two or three few weeks before, we're getting inundated with complaints about where's our money because they're going to go bust. They've got cash flow issues and actually it comes through in some cases too late. So going back to councillor Toulon's question, some of those businesses may have gone out of business because they can't wait the time it takes for the government to give the eligibility criteria to the likes of Darren and Martin Youngness. So we sit waiting and waiting and waiting too long. And that's where I think people are out of touch with how a business operates and how it has to meet its cash flow needs. And I know that the, the announcement made on the fifth of January, Darren can correct me here, but I don't think the money came through until round about the twenty eighth of January with the conditions, the eligibility. That's not good. You should be much faster in helping these businesses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, any more comments or questions on this agenda item? Okay, on that basis then, can I move that Darren be thanked for the report and that the information be noted? Is that agreed? Okay, thank you. Um, just before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I do just want to say that I have asked Darren and his team to, um, to provide some sort of word-by-word geographical based breakdown on the business grant distribution so that we can do a piece of analysis on how there's inequalities which are either addressed or exacerbated by the distribution of grants across the city. Last thing I want to say is that the parts of the city that are already uh more affluent than others are made yet more affluent by the business grant distribution and the way that that's done. Unfortunately, because the team is being so overworked, that hasn't been made available and it wasn't ready for tonight's meeting. But when it is made available, I'll be sending that round to the, all of the members of the committee for your comments and for your, for your information. So we'll move on to item number six, exams and qualifications. Uh, this is, the papers for this agenda item are pages twenty one to twenty three of the agenda. Uh, can I invite Steve Reddy to introduce the report? So Steve, if you're in the meeting, make your presence known. There you are. Over to you Steve. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank, thank you Chair. Um, appreciate our short aside, so I'll be as, as quick as I can. Just before I talk about the issue of exams and qualifications, uh, I hope you did join me in just really thanking all our, all our staff who work in all phases of education in the city, early years right through to post sixteen and FE, just for the fantastic efforts they've made uh during the last year to keep education going on in our, in our city for our young people. It's been incredibly tough and they've worked incredibly hard. And, and I guess we, we should also pay testament to, to the young people as well. Uh, and, and latterly, um, the acting mayor and councillor Murray did also write out to parents as well who've been struggling with maintaining home learning alongside their other responsibilities as well. So just to place that on record. Um, if I could just go to the specifics then around exams and qualifications. Um, so the government have actually consulted um during, during the last, last month or so in terms of the future of, of the examinations. I think it's clear that there won't be um the A levels and GCSEs uh that people are used to. And there will be more um uh centre-assessed, teacher-assessed grades. I think um as we wait for the outcome of the consultation, there is still some discussion around mini-assessments. And I think it, it would be remiss of me not to mention that from the sector, from teaching um unions and, and also um head teachers, I think there is a quite high degree of anxiety and stress about what, what these mini-assessments might actually involve. But that is something that there's still some uncertainty around. And I guess that uncertainty itself is causing some anxiety. Um, we are expecting from Ofqual and the Department for Education something later this month in terms of um response to the consultation and some clear plans. Um, in terms of the university sector, um, the end of year exams for twenty twenty one, as we've said in the notes, will be held online. Um, typically students will be given twenty-four hour windows to complete um exams online. There, there is um safety, safety measures in place for particularly for students who, who've been dealing with some exceptional circumstances that are affecting them. Uh, and that, you know, that's obviously positive to, to hear from our local universities that they're putting that support in place. Um, just broader issues around Covid, students who've travelled home for Christmas are expected to study remotely apart from several hands-on courses like medicine and veterinary science. Uh, those, those who are back onto university grounds are taking the, the, the Covid tests um or self-isolating as well. I think again, it's really important to flag up that I think there, there is some real concern um around young people's mental health and wellbeing, um, just generally because of the impact on Covid. But also because of these additional things around, around exams and study and, and I, I mean that in all phases of education. And I, and I think that's something that as a city, as a country, we're really going to have to invest in the next few years to support our, our young people's mental health. Uh, the final thing I've ever made Chair, just while I've, I've, I've got the, I've got the floor, is one of the, the areas, our schools have been working really hard on Covid testing uh and, and doing that successfully, also working really hard on home learning support. And the city council with support from Chamber of Commerce has, has launched an initiative called Devices and Dongles to try and coordinate the, the many generous contributions to support home learning. Um, so i- if, if colleagues on the committee could share that on social media and any other opportunities to get that be uh much appreciated. Thank you.
I knew that would happen. I was on mute, apologies. Thank you very much for your report Steve. And does anyone have any questions off the back of that report? Okay, Ian, I'll bring you in Ian Byrne.
Thanks Chair. And just to echo your, your words Steve, for everybody that's been involved uh at Magdipson's effort by the city council and all the, the teachers throughout the schools, just a couple of things. Uh, have the government discussed vaccine for teachers when they're talking about reopening uh the schools for frontline workers uh within the schools? Has that been on the agenda? Have you been asked about that? Digital exclusion being a massive issue uh right throughout the city uh and which is very worrying when we're talking about potentially mini-assessments, Williamson's talking about mini-assessments. So, you know, how fair is that? Uh, we've had many kids digitally excluded or, and recently maybe only got a laptop after so many months now. Uh, it's a huge issue, certainly in West Derby and Everton and sure across the city. And just, I think you raised an extremely important point about uh mental health. Uh, we've just recently had to fundraise uh for the sentry room in Notre Dame because of the, the huge spike in uh mental health. It's quite shameful that the community have had to pay for the sentry room uh in Notre Dame because of the lack of uh resource getting fed into the council from central government. So that's something I'd be taking up certainly as a, as an MP. But I think it's going to be a huge issue once we come out of Covid, what we're going to be after dealing with, with the, with the mental health aspect of how this has damaged uh our children and society in general. So this is the three points today and thanks very much for the great job you're doing.
Uh, tha- thank you Ian, really, really appreciate that. Chair, is it okay if I come back on that?
Yeah, feel free, please do.
Yeah, I, I think Ian, the point about vaccination is, is really, really important. I, as of yet, I'm not seeing any confirmation around that that being offered. But certainly, um, some of our teaching unions have raised a number of conditions they would expect to see. Uh, and I think that amongst the, the groups that are being prioritised, I certainly think that teachers should, should, should be up there really. Um, I know that there has been some research published around, you know, how, the extent to which the, the virus is spreading in, in, in schools, but I think, I think it's too complicated to say there's one definitive study that says, um, that, you know, school, school is not a place where the virus is being spread. The schools are a reflection of the community and as we know, different communities are seeing different rates of infection. Um, so I, I think again, I think if we get any opportunities to raise that, we are raising uh vaccination of teaching staff and, and all school staff as well. And that's really important. I think I would, I would just echo back your points about digital exclusion. I think there's a real risk that inequality across the board i- is being worsened as a consequence of the virus. And um city council and schools are doing all we can um to support people with um connectivity and with devices. But there is a risk that we're sort of, if we don't do more and if we don't get additional resources and, and support financially, we could be further disadvantaging those people who are already disadvantaged. Um, and, and yes, I wholeheartedly support your point about more investment into mental health. I think it's something we're going to see over the next few years that, that we're, um, if we don't tackle now, it's going to cause real problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Steve. Does anybody else have questions for you? Okay, I'll just raise something then. Um, one of the things I mentioned earlier, um, paid tribute to committee services and the way that they've from a stand and start managed to use the video conferencing software, managed to get all of this infrastructure up and running within a matter of months whilst unable to have sufficient numbers of face-to-face meetings that they would normally do. And I just want to see Steve about whilst the, the lack of examinations and the problems with formal schooling are going to be having a knock-on impact on employment prospects. And they're going to have a knock-on impact, impact on how future employers accurately assess whether or not applicants are suitable for roles. Whether there's something on the flip side of that that says that because students have gone through this tumultuous year and they've managed to come out the other side of it with some of their IT skills and twenty, the, the skills they're going to need in the twenty twenties and twenty thirties enhanced, whether. whether there's something we can do as an organisation, as a local authority, to promote that for their career prospects and see whether or not in the absence of formalised exam settings, we can turn that on its head almost and say, these students have got transferable skills that they've picked up and far be it from them actually being done down over the last twelve months, the way that they've coped with this, standing in good stead as employees, is there something there that you can build on, do you think?
Um tha- thanks Chair, I think that that's a really important point. I am, I, I was kindly invited into um a school council meeting the other week at Coldstones High School and I was just talking to the young people there about, you know, they are the, they are the generation who have to deal with something that, that we've never dealt with before. And I think uh that's a really good point you make about their skills and their resilience. Um it's something that we should recognise as well as, as we've said, you know, um the additional support and particularly things like mental health, uh we need to put in for, for those that need it. I think that um we can all be incredibly proud of the way our young people have come through this. Um when you were talking about skills and I T, I was, I was reminded of that young lad who on his um home learning lessons changed, changed his name to Still Connecting, uh which meant the teacher never went to him to ask him a question, um that lad's a genius. Um but I think, I think that's a, that's a really important point, Chair, about um recognising what our young people have been through. Um and uh the fa- final thing I would say is you, you reference to the sort of employment. I think it's a really great appointment of Katie, by the way, who's on the call today in terms of that work between schools and employers, and it's gonna be more important than ever uh as part of the Covid recovery that we, we make that connection um better than we maybe have before, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. A lovely segue there, Steve, it's almost like you, you've done this sort of thing before because we're gonna be moving on to discuss the, the, the work that Katie's doing very shortly. Um first, I need to formally move that Steve be thanked for the report and the information be noted, so is that agreed from everybody? Fantastic, thank you very much. Okay, item seven was, is our regular adult learning service update. Um this evening it is on pages twenty four to thirty one of your agenda, so. I don't know whether you've all twisted this out or not, but whether you have, turn to page twenty one, if you've not, just have a look on the screen. Um I'm being asked to invite Elaine McCawsland to introduce the report, so Elaine, over to you. And I believe you've got some assistance as well.
Yeah, thank you Chair, can everybody hear me okay? Great, nice to see everybody. Um so this is the, the, the regular report that I produce to committee. Um and this, this report covers uh an update on our adult learning service. It covers an employment update from our Ways to Work team. Uh it covers a new programme that I'm pleased to tell you all about, which is the Positive Inclusion Programme, which is European funded. An update on Kickstarter, and I know there've been some questions around that this evening. Um and I'd also like um to introduce and welcome Katie Spall, who will, I'll invite to talk in just a second, uh around some new work that uh we've launched around supporting schools and businesses. And Katie is a seconded um member of the team now that we've been very fortunate to get uh in place, and I'll talk a little bit about that in, in a second. And the final thing I've done in the report is put a neat update in for you. So I know we're a bit short on time and I know these are regular items, but I know it's very important for the committee to, to hear about progress that our city council officers are making to support young people into work and adults into learning and qualifications. Um so in terms of the adult learning service update, very briefly, as I'm sure you're aware, we've moved to a fully remote offer using Microsoft Teams. And the team have worked really hard and just echoing what has already been discussed this evening around the resilience really of our learners and, and of our staff as well. Um so we have around about two thousand learners across the city engaged in adult learning classes, which is brilliant. And we do know that we've got about six hundred and twenty seven registered qualifications that our learners are keen to take very soon through maths and English and, and lots of other things. And we're waiting for updates from our Ofqual and our exam boards about how our learners will take those qualifications. We've done some survey work and we know that around about ninety five percent of learners do have some kind of tick, digital tick. Um and about two thirds of those are confident uh with online learning, so that's okay to hear. But for the remaining learners and those digitally disadvantaged learners, we've done what we can to try and support those learners and we've dished out laptops, we've had some donations and uh we, we're doing what we can for those learners to make sure that they're in learning and they stay in learning. And that's the message that we've given to our combined authorities who fund this contract, that we're doing absolutely everything we can to keep our learners engaged and stay, stay with us. And for some of those learners, it's, adult learning is a lifeline, it is something that they, they, they need to do. And, you know, a lot of learners have mental health issues and it keeps people going as well, so there's lots of added benefits. So um I hope that that gives you, you know, s- some updates on the adult learning side. I'll just move quickly on to the ways to work side. Um and I know councillor Shortall asked a question about evaluation of ways to work and yes, absolutely councillor Shortall, we would do a full and thorough evaluation of the programme as it moves to the close. And, and we are bidding for more funds, there are more unspent national reserve funds. So we're, we're in the process of, of putting some bids together for this work. But that, this second report really just covers the continuation of a range of different ways that the employment team have continued to offer for the residents to help them either get back into work or find a job or, you know, keep them um engaged in job search activities. So the team are working really hard on that at the moment. And again, that's been a fully online, remote uh offer at the moment. So the team are doing lots of different things um to help people. Very, very pleased to say as well on the employment support side, that we bid for some additional European funding and we were successful with that. Um and we've now just launched quite recently, over the past month or so, a new Positive Inclusion Programme. And this is a programme that targets our younger cohort across the city, our sixteen to twenty four year olds. And it's given them really intensive support to help them, particularly those who are at risk of NEAT, those who have special educational needs and worklessness or, or uh lone parents, for example. Individuals can self-refer or come through Job Centre Plus, D W P. And we're offering them two very intensive um programmes of support around personal development and work experience. So we've got some challenging targets there because it's very concentrated work. Um we've got about two hundred and ninety five individuals to support. But that work goes right the way through to December twenty twenty two. And if members want any further information about that, I'd be really happy to provide you with some information you might need connecting with your residents across the board. And we'd be really happy to provide more information. Caroline White from the team is leading on that programme. And I'll just move on quickly to Kickstarter and again, I know we've had questions around Kickstarter. We have had some delays in pr- processing vacancies with employers. Uh but I'm really pleased to say that actually we're just about to launch fifty one vacancies. Um and that is from around thirteen employers. Um and we've actually got another twenty one employers with a total of ninety four vacancies to push out. So that's really positive news despite there being some, some delays with, with the programme getting it out. We are about to do some press and some media as well. So again, what I'll make sure I do is connect um members in to that, that publicity. And again, for any residents across the board, we'd be really keen to, you know, share and, and connect you into those vacancies. They do go through Job Centre Plus through the work coaches, but what we're also trying to do is make sure that our very, very young uh residents, our sixteen and seventeen year olds, where they're at risk of NEAT and we're working very closely with them, that we do as much as we can to connect those young people to those vacancies. And we are talking quite closely to D W P and Job Centre Plus about that at the moment to see where we can, if they're not on U C, that we can very proactively help them. Um so the, the, the final thing, uh I, I guess I wanna kind of touch on and introduce uh and hand over, and I know I've not got a lot of time because we're, we're up against it, is, is Katie Spall, who's a seconded um officer in the City Council. Um Katie is going to be leading on our Supporting School and Business Link. It isn't a project, it is a completely um, a, a new way of working and a, and a new system change, I guess, to really look at how we connect our businesses and our employers with our schools and maximise the opportunities that our young people have got. And you may recall, I don't know if it might have been about a year ago, we had Joyce Yowd, who did some work with us on a talent pipeline. And Katie has taken some of that work over now and will be leading on that. And just to say that Katie was interviewed with me uh by Paul, Paul Sherco, who's the Chief Executive Chamber of Commerce, and James McDonald, who's the Chair of the, what we call LASH, which is the National Association of Secondary Heads. So uh Katie was appointed into LASH through a, a rigorous process. Um and so Katie, I will hand over to you, uh if you just wanna spend a few minutes just introducing yourself to the committee.
Hi, can people hear me? Excellent, um so yeah, my name's Casey Spall. Um I have had the pleasure of being seconded into um this senior management role um with a, a, a sort of clear remit really to bring together um more effectively businesses and schools. Um with a remit to um better direct opportunities from businesses to schools and but also to help businesses um I suppose wade through the number of requests that they're getting from schools and, and understand opportunities that are around um work experience and looking outside of that work experience in um into things like um understanding traineeships, apprenticeships, kickstarts and all of this type of um opportunities. And because what businesses are very much saying is, you know, there's so much out there, we don't really we understand all the different bits and pieces that, that are being presented. And plus they get lots and lots of requests from schools. So there's a desire within the business community to have a better system. Um and then there is also obviously a desire in schools. And my remit is very much to be working um to develop um, I s- I suppose a pipeline, but um n- not necessarily calling it a talent pipeline, but a pipeline to channel students who maybe um are demotivated at school, possibly the more vulnerable um individuals in schools. And they might be vulnerable for attendance reasons, they might be vulnerable because they might be send students. Um so um, or they could be um looked after children um or young carers. So these groups of young individuals um with some intensive work, which we're gonna develop and, and presenting them with these opportunities with businesses is a great opportunity, um a great sort of project that I'm really looking forward to getting my attention to.
Thank you both to Elaine and to Katie, it's good to have you here this evening. Really appreciate the work that you're doing there. Um can I ask members any questions or any comments? My team's software is playing up slightly, so I can't actually see whether or not anybody's indicating an intention to speak. So if you are, please just carry on speaking and I'll, I'll hand over the floor.
No hands up, Chair.
There's no hands up, okay. Um in that case, I'll ask Elaine, please, if that's okay. Um I did ask earlier about Kickstarter and you've given some, some good information about the number of employers that have been approved, number of vacancies there, et cetera. Can I ask, from a dynamic perspective, that was figures from November of last year, are employers saying that because of delays they're dropping out? Or are the delays actually being, uh is it a positive almost to say employers have got more time to, to get involved in the scheme? How is the delays to the scheme impacting on the numbers that you're seeing one way or the other?
Thanks Chair, we, we've not, my knowledge, seen much impact um with the, the delays which have been around the due diligence processes that have had to take place amongst other things. Um and so I'm, I'm quite encouraged by that really, because the team continues to generate a lot of interest from employers, certainly from our perspective as a city council intermediary. And I'm not sure about others um across the city, because obviously there are lots of other intermediaries out there. But no, we remain quite positive and we, 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 we want really as much as possible to try and grow the amount of um, you know, job creation or, sorry, work placement creation that we can as much as possible. We do meet very regularly with um other intermediaries and the combined authority policy team lead those meetings weekly and sometimes fortnightly. So we're constantly reviewing everything and we've got a very, very close dialogue with D W P. Um so we, we, we do, we are closely monitoring the situation.
Thank you. Um question for Katie, if I may. And after this question I'll bring in, I can just see councillor Shortall is indicating. Um one of the aims of the, the, the role that you've got here is to work with the Chamber of Commerce and other businesses and employers to improve connections with schools and generating opportunities is what we're being told. Um not to do down the Chamber of Commerce, but I know that they only represent a fraction of employers across the city. Um certainly in my ward, I, I would, you know, see that almost every single retail outlet and restaurant that exists in my ward would not be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So what are you doing specifically to embed those links between businesses, which rightly or wrongly might not be part of membership bodies such as that? And, and how do you see your role in those terms?
Thanks, um okay, yeah, so that, I'm not gonna be just working with the chamber, the chamber is obviously um it is, is one um organisation, Professional Liverpool um is another, but I've also um already been making contact with other employers um in the city region and outside of the city region as well um to get, to um talk to them about um the, the possibility of building a, an employer network. And that employer network, the, the wider I can make it, the better. Um so um for example, H S B C, um talking to lots of connections it with schools, linking in with who are their governors, what businesses have they got connections with already? Um and what, and then identifying, I suppose, the gaps that we have and reaching out to those um professional organisations, retail organisations to try and build that network of businesses up. Um to start with, so far I've got, obviously got the um Chamber of Commerce and I'm meeting them um to reach out to as many employers in their remit as possible next week. Um but already um local um civil service um and um H S B C, things like Morrison's, these are all employers that, um Langorock, et cetera, are all employers that I've already been in talks with. And they're all very committed to being involved in, in what we're doing across the city, so that's really positive.
Thank you. Uh councillor Shortall, I've heard you and you've been very patient with the report.
Yeah, oh thanks for that, uh thanks for the report, by the way. Uh I just want a question on about NEAT, not in, in the I just want to question on about needs, not in education and employment and training. It's gone off, it's a hundred and six, seven more. What direct actions are we taking to help them? Because I can imagine it's going to be waiting the pandemic, you know, this is behind, you know. What direct action are we going to do to help? Thanks.
Thanks councillor Shortall. It's a really good question and it is high, our Liverpool needs is high. I do have some more positive encouraging information though. We've done a January data return and it has come down a fair bit. So I'm not able to report just today on that book. At the next meeting, we should have some further updates. But yeah, I mean, the programmes that I've outlined in the report are all programmes to, you know, aid need reduction. And I think one of the things we've done over the past sort of three to six months is we're working very much more closely with our children and young people colleagues internally in our leave and care teams, our virtual head. You know, there's lots of things that we're doing with our own internal teams to look at, working very closely with, you know, looking at the risks that we've got and how we can mitigate some of that risk and really support our young people. And some of this is about our not knowns as well and really getting underneath, you know, where some of those young people are. And we've done a significant amount of work over the past few months. So there is a lag on some of this reporting, to be fair. And we have made some significant strides to reduce this right now. But the work continues and, you know, I take your point absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Toulon, next, please.
Thanks Chair. Just a quick question for Katie actually. It sounds like you've got a huge mandate, Katie, of things ahead of you. I'm just interested, you mentioned one of your targets is going to be trying to help vulnerable children. And I think we understand that's a big priority. What is your priority then? Just I know it's building networks with employers. And how is that going to be measured? So how, what does success look like for you, Katie?
Sorry, just trying to unmute. And so, yeah, really good question again. So I suppose, what does success look like? Success looks like a reduction in the number of not in employment, education and training is going to be the key measure. But I think from the work that I intend to do in schools, that has to be, and I suppose talking about some of the, or mentioning some of the things that Steve mentioned before. One of the things we're going to have to do is do a lot of work with young people in schools, the more vulnerable young people. And two, I suppose, help them develop resilience, help them with their mental health and look at developing their skills so that they're ready for the workplace. And one of the things that is coming from businesses is that young people aren't ready when they're arriving to them with the right employability skills. So some of the work that I'm going to be doing in schools is with businesses. And getting them to tie in with the young individuals through a mentoring programme, which is obviously part of the project work that I'm going to be developing. And getting those individuals, I suppose, intensively ready for work. And then with that opportunity created with the businesses and some of those, I suppose, developing that network of what opportunities they'll provide them with. More work placements, more successful work placements leading to employment will be another key measure. And that will eventually reduce that not in employment, education and training figure coming through from the schools.
Sorry, so is your priority the needs then?
Well, that's a very large number. It's those more vulnerable learners. But those needs, a large proportion of those are students with special educational needs. And that's a large number of students who don't end up in employment. So some of that will be about a more successful engagement with things like supported internships, which are very much looking after helping young people into employment with those special educational needs and then hopefully at the end of that, remaining in those employment opportunities. And it's generating with businesses more of those opportunities for young people to go into, which will effectively, I suppose, end up reducing the need figures.
Thanks Katie.
Thank you. Any more questions for either of our offices? No problem. We shall move on. And can I move that Elaine be thanked for her report and that the information contained within be noted, if that's agreed? Next item on our agenda, item eight. An update on the work of the Race Equality Task Force. Now, I know that above the surface, it looks like the meeting goes smoothly, but I know that behind the scenes, we've had some connection difficulties with Tracy tonight. So I'm just checking, you can hear me okay and your microphone's working fine, hopefully as well.
I hope so, yes, thank you.
Right. So can I formally invite Tracy to the Race Equality Task Force to give a short presentation on the work of the task force? And hopefully you should all be seeing the PowerPoint presentation on the screen now. So over to you, Tracy.
Thank you Chair. And I do apologise, yeah, I've been having horrendous problems with my computer and microphone this evening. So hopefully you'll be able to hear me today. So thank you for the opportunity to present the work of the task force. And I'll just bring you all up to date. As you'll be aware, well, you're aware of the publicity surrounding the setup of the task force. I actually started my secondment from September of last year. I've set about recruiting the task force members, so we've recruited eleven task force members. We've agreed our terms of reference and we've also agreed the operating model that the task force will use as we move forward. We've agreed our priority themes and no surprises really, education, employment skills and economy, health and wellbeing, crime and criminal justice and culture. Our operating model then, that we're using is collecting data, so getting all the evidence as much as we can in terms of the stats and understanding what they are, what the position is. Holding a series of dialogue sessions and inviting a whole range of stakeholders to the specific dialogue sessions that we have. From the data and the dialogue sessions, we pull together then a lot of information and key questions that we want to ask the senior and strategic leads in the specific issues. And then we've also got a programme of engaging young people in the work of the task force as we move forward. And out of all of that, we will come forward to the host of goal-based recommendations. In terms of engagement, initially, before I started the work, I held a big community Zoom. And it was mainly with the BAME community organisations and voluntary sector. I've gave a presentation to the People Power Partnership. I've gave a number of presentations to a whole host of cultural organisations and also engaged with universities. I gave a presentation to the University of Liverpool Senior Leadership Team. That was a hundred and forty-two people that attended that session. I've also had one-on-one sessions with the Vice Chancellor of Hope University and numerous staff members at Liverpool John Moores. I've met with Bill Addy and Crispin Palin and Paul Chappell at the various membership, business membership organisations. And these were all in the very early days. And I've also gave a presentation to Local Solutions to their board. I've met on, had a number of meetings with Merseyside Police. I do attend the Liverpool City Council Equalities Task Group. So there's an open invitation for me to attend all of their meetings. And that task group is chaired by Liz Parsons, councillor Liz Parsons. I also have keeping in touch meetings with Anna Rothery, in her capacity as Mayor or Lead for Equalities. And I work very closely with Lorna Rogers. Lorna Rogers is actually a member of the Race Equality Task Force. But I particularly work closely with her around the employment and skills agenda. And I also have an open invitation to attend the Liverpool City Region Local Authority Race Equality Officer Meetings. In respect of education then, we've held a whole series of dialogue sessions around education. And that starts from early years, not five, right through to key stage one and two, infants and juniors and the seniors, as well as colleges and universities. We've also held a specific dialogue with Black and racial minority staff from schools, colleges and universities. And all these sessions have been recorded and transcribed. And the way the dialogue sessions have taken place is in respect of key stage three and five, you know, and this is the same for all of them really, in terms of the stakeholders that are invited. There've been parents, there've been governors, there've been teachers and head teachers. And the same for like universities, there've been principals and vice, principals from colleges and vice chancellors from universities and other levels of staff. So really good engagement that we've had in respect of the dialogue sessions. We also had discussions with the Cabinet Member for Education, councillor Barbara Murray. At that time, the Cabinet Member for Children's Services was Barry Kushner. Obviously he's now moved portfolio. And I'd met with the Select Committee Chair, John Prince, Director of Education, Director of Children's Services. The list is there, so you get the picture really that I've held a series of one-on-one discussions with senior staff members or council leads in respect of education. The themes and issues that have come out in terms of education then have been, and these are broad themes, we've got a lot of detailed information that sits underneath these, is around representation and you wouldn't be surprised about that, is the lack of representation in terms of people from Black and racial minority backgrounds right across the board. So not just in schools, in other educational sectors, but also throughout all levels as well. Dealing with racist behaviour, in particular, teachers reporting that they've witnessed racist behaviour or they've been victim of racist behaviour. And the situation not being dealt with properly, not following procedures. And other teachers reporting that they had no confidence to report racist behaviour when they were the victim of it. And really cited the concern of backlash to them personally. We had stereotypes and people witnessing stereotypes and the impact that has on disciplinary actions. So for example, black children and white children being dealt with differently for the same behaviour. The issue around admissions and around that, particularly around access into faith schools. And also the distance that people have to travel across areas rather than being able to access schools at a local level. The attainment and attainment gap, recognition that we see that is reducing, but still issues around attainment. And also in terms of transition. So when young people were transitioning from junior school into senior school, real difficulty. So kids who were really high achieve and being put in bottom sets and then really having difficulties in getting moved from those bottom sets, even though they've got the, you know, the ability to be in higher sets. So quite a lot of issues that have come out in terms of the themes. The one that I would also pick on there is special educational needs. And those needs being masked by English as a second language. And the other is training and the training, type of training and quality of training that's being offered. From the dialogues then and the data that we received, we held a whole series of formal evidence sessions. And they were, have been like at strategic level, so cabinet member and Chair of Select Committees, Director of Children's Services and Education, and also the CEO from Elaine Rees from Liverpool Learning Partnership. And we had two sessions, the first one we ran out of time and we reconvened to finish that work off. We've met with Chairs of Governors, Special Educational Needs, Further Education and Higher Education. We did hold sessions with key stage one and two, key stage three and five, and with alternative education providers. However, we did have, not everybody could attend in December. And so we'd rearranged those sessions for very early January. And you will all be aware of the situation of the, you know, the lockdown that occurred again, which put the schools, and very understandably, in a position where they were having to focus on, you know, making sure that they're, you know, they're all doing home learning from, you know, and going online, et cetera. So we were asked by our educational colleagues if we could delay some of the work that we wanted to do in early January, which we did agree and understandably. So and what we've asked for is that rather than come to, you know, a dialogue, sorry, a formal evidence hearing, that those head teachers provide written submissions into us to the questions that we were asking. And that also, we've decided that we would also ask all head teachers to complete a survey. And again, we were asked just to delay that survey going out, which we have done. And I understand the survey is ready to go out next week after the half-term break. In terms of community engagement, I mentioned the Zoom meeting before, you know, I'd started. I participated in a whole host of panel discussions, both locally and nationally. I've given a number of radio interviews. We've met with teaching unions, so organised by the T U C. T U C organised a range of teaching unions and I've met with them. We've met with the Students Guild, both from Liverpool University and also John Moores University. We engaged with Liverpool C V S, so Liverpool Council for Voluntary Services, to work with us, to put out a call for local community and voluntary sector to do some further on-the-ground engagement on our behalf. So it will be that this is what we've heard, this is what we found, does this ring true to you? And to make sure that we're picking up if there are any gaps, anything that we've not covered. And also young people's engagement, so there's been, there's a young person survey that has been taking place. And also there's a training exercise being undertaken next week it is. And that is for practitioners in early years, not to five, to hold discussions with the young children, three to four-year-olds, to gain the knowledge of their experiences in the childcare setting. So in terms of going forward, because of the slip in education, we've revamped our timeline. And we've agreed and decided that our education report will be now released the same time as the employment skills and economy. So that will be towards the end of April twenty-one. So we want to make sure that we don't rush education, that we finish off and we collect all the information that we need to do. But at the same time, we don't lose any time in the whole timeframe. So we're going to be, we've already started on employment skills and economy. And we've made that decision that we'll start and there'll be an overlap of the two running together. And that will actually happen right throughout now till the end of the work that we're covering in September twenty-one. In respect of employment skills and economy then, we have started on this and we started in February. We've had one-on-one sessions, or I have had one-on-one sessions with strategic leads. So with councillor Murray and councillor Patrick Hurley and also councillor Miller. I've also met with Frank McKenna, Bill Addy, Paul Chappell, Ian Finlison. And today I also met, and his name's just completely gone, from the professionals, Andrew Ruffler, sorry, from the professional organisation, Professional Liverpool. So I met with him this morning. And as I said earlier, working really closely with Lorna Rogers and Emmy Inora from the Combined Authority. We're working closely to ensure that when we're speaking with business leaders, we're all speaking with the one voice and at the one time where we can do that. And I'm also, you know, in on meetings that they're holding and they're attending meetings that I am. So for example, there's a big piece of work that the Combined Authority have commissioned on positive action. And that's being done by Inner Vision Consultancy. And I've been working, been involved in those meetings and understand what that research is. And that research will be fed into the work of the task force. And so, you know, both of our work will be we'll be sharing in terms of the information that we get to make sure that, just maximise really all of the information and the impact of the work that, you know, we want to do and the outcomes. There's a whole series of dialogues that have been organised for next week that we will hold one for careers advising and employment support, dealing with needs, we talked about they're not in education, employment and training. We will hold one specifically for young people, 16 to 21-year-olds. We're also holding apprenticeship and trainee session with providers and with hosts and also a wider look in terms of dialogue, in terms of job seekers, again, people who are looking for employment, also for those providers who provide employment support and adult training. And we will also hold a BAME-specific dialogue and that will be on Friday. Again, we're going through the BAME network, staff networks to invite people, you know, to those sessions. Sorry, that was, I gave a presentation yesterday, I think it was, to the City Council Race Equality Staff Group, so that's why my details are there. So, yeah, that's the end of the presentation, but it's just really to give you all an overview of where we are, what we've been doing and in particular in terms of employment and skills, just to let you know that we are now moving into employment and skills and as well as these dialogue sessions, once we've held the dialogue sessions, we'll be holding a host of roundtable and formal evidence-based sessions going forward and they will be in March. I'm happy to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed there, Tracy. I'll not ask any questions because as you already said, I've had an hour-long meeting with you earlier in the month and I don't want to be hogging the meeting here and now, but I'd like to invite any other members of the committee to ask any questions of Tracy that they may have. No? Seems you've lined everybody with your brilliance there, Tracy, nobody has got anything that they wish to pick a bone with about you, so on that basis, I shall move on. Nothing left for me to do on this agenda item, other than to thank you a great deal for the work that you're doing as part of the task force and leading the task force. Thank you for the presentation and the update and can I move to the committee that the information be noted, so is that agreed? Fantastic. As I believe I mentioned earlier, item number nine was, or is an update from the Combined Authority. I did sadly get a last-minute notice this morning that they're unable to attend today's meeting for a number of reasons. We have been given a confirmation and an assurance that at the next meeting, which will be held in the new municipal year, we don't have a date for that yet, but that nobody will be attending the next meeting to give the update required. Darren Hardy has kindly offered to give a brief overview of some of the issues, so if I can ask Darren, is that is still an offer that you're happy to make to the committee?
I am sure, yes.
Over to you then Darren, thank you for the view then, thank you for that.
Very briefly Chair, I mean, what I'd say is that I think the level of cooperation between the Combined Authority and the City Council, in fact all the local authorities since the Covid crisis began, has been exceptional. I sit on a group called the Growth Directors and we try and look after business growth in the city and I think for the first four months of the crisis, we met every morning for at least 30, 45 minutes to try and coordinate what our response was to businesses across the city region. Much of our efforts during that time has been spent upon designing grant programmes, finding funding for grant programmes, I think councillor Miller indicated earlier on that people talk about the additional restrictions grant, which government gave at £20 a head, I think members will recall that in fact, we as city region made announcements that we were about to fund businesses regardless whether that grant came through or not. And in fact, we'd designed and launched a business grant programme using our own resources, well, combined authorities' resources to be fair, plus some money from the City Council before that additional restrictions grant was announced. So there's been massive amounts of work in that space Chair, in terms of ensuring that businesses have the support, had money flowing as quickly as possible and taking chances to look at how can we support self-employed through this as a crisis. I think during September, October, perhaps with a degree of unfounded optimism, we did begin to talk about recovery for a period of time and what would we do during the recovery process. The Combined Authority have relaunched, I think, that debate amongst the authorities, what now is the route out of Covid for businesses, what can we do to support those businesses, not just in a few months' time but now, who can create jobs now? I mean, we'd spend a lot of time talking about hospitality and leisure sector and how that sector has been affected, but actually we know there are other bits of the economy that have continued to grow during the Covid crisis and what can we do to encourage those bits of the economy and to be able to capture jobs from those economies and make those jobs available for local residents. She also said Chair, obviously, we launched, I think we presented it committee last year, we launched our recovery plan to governments in terms of economic recovery. A few weeks later, the Combined Authority launched theirs and very much everything that we said in our plan, they absorbed into their plan, as well as the wishes necessary of the local authorities. I think finally, the thing to maybe finish on Chair is, again, about June, July last year, the Combined Authority did manage to secure some of Boris's Build Back Better Fund, obviously somebody in government likes alliteration, and used that fund to help us deliver the Littlewoods Scheme that I think committees have heard about in the past, but have also helped secure in the same period, some grants for housing renewal, for remediation of green belts in the city region, all of which that they're working with us on and all of which will help secure jobs moving forwards. I'm sure if Mark Boothfield or one of his colleagues were here, they'd be able to talk in much more detail, but hopefully that's a quick whistle-stop talk.
It certainly is a quick whistle-stop talk, thank you very much for giving us that brief overview and pretty much at the last minute and with no preparation, so thanks for that. I'm going to allow one question from committee members, so does anybody want to be the one person to ask the question? Maria, I'll let you do it.
Thanks, Patrick, thanks Chair. I don't know if you can answer Patrick, but I know we put the Covid recovery plan in, didn't we? It went to government, the one that we put in in June, do we know if that's been accepted or is it still being looked at?
Great question, great question.
Great question, great question. Barbara addressed this or Darren, do you want to give an officer's reply? The recovery plan, has it been accepted?
Sure, I think, like most of the recovery plans that lots of cities put in, and ours was the first one, not just cities but local authorities, ours was the first one in, but governments have remained steadfastly silent on their response to any of the plans. However, I would just like maybe to just remind committee members of some of the things that we said in that plan. We said in that plan that we needed some form of specific employment programme for young people and a few months later, government announced Kickstart. We said in that plan that we needed money for retrofit and a few months later, government announced the Green Homes Programme. We said in that plan that we needed money for Littlewoods amongst other schemes and we got money from Littlewoods. And so whilst governments have never actually come back and said, yes, we accept your plan and we support your plan, I think what we've seen is that elements of the funding that we asked for have flowed. I think the big challenge is what happens next and nobody knows that, spec government don't even know that at this stage. We'd hope to see some announcements in the budget in March that potentially will give us some opportunities to deliver some of the outcomes that we've pointed to in that recovery plan, but at this stage Chair, we just don't have any clarity and none of it's anybody else nationally.
Okay.
But yes, that was a very good question.
Thank you for your update there Darren. Okay, so can I formally move that Darren be thanked and that the information be noted, is that agreed? Okay, fantastic. We have one motion that's been put forward by committee member councillor Alan Tormey regarding the extension and extension of the furlough scheme. Now councillor Tormey, would you like to formally move the motion and if you would like to speak to it as well, feel free for a moment, I'll say.
Okay, thank you very much councillor. Yes, I formally moved the motion, it reiterates the importance of the extension of the furlough scheme, which we've previously been chatting about in this meeting today, really Gary Mellon hit the nail on the head with a few points he mentioned earlier on. So really, I don't need to reiterate the motion itself specifically, but it's really just to put pressure on central government really to extend it after the basis that the fact that they extended it, but we don't believe it to be extended long enough really. So I'm only asking for a short extension mainly to June of this year, hopefully maybe a bit further if possible needs be, but if anybody has any questions, I think it's the right time to do it. It follows on from, I think it was Wendy and Joanne back in the council meeting at the end of last year, they mentioned the review of the furlough scheme to protect the hospitality in the pub sector and stuff like that, so it's a reoccurring theme, so that's it, really just if that's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Tormey. I've been notified of an amendment by councillor Shortall, so councillor Shortall, can I bring you in please?
Yes, thanks Chair, I'd just like to do an amendment, I'd like to extend it till the 31st of October 2021, so it's only a simple amendment, but I'm sure Alan would accept it and have all the members agreed to it, so 31st of October 2021.
Okay, thank you councillor Shortall, is that seconded by anybody?
Yeah, I'll second that Chair.
Thanks councillor Robinson. Alan, councillor Tormey, can I ask, is that amendment accepted?
Yes, that's absolutely perfectly fine, yeah. Based on the timing of the meeting and when I submitted the motion, that timing does seem to be probably the right thing to do, so I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay, great. On that basis then, shall we move to a vote? Is councillor Tormey's amended motion to request that government extends the furlough scheme until October 31st 2021 and that we call on the chief executive to write to the chancellor urging that policy change, is that amended motion approved by the committee? Okay, amazing, thank you very much all. We shall move to the final item, which is question time and the only thing that I have to do on this basis is inform you that no questions have been received. We have no date set for the next meeting of the Employment and Skills Select Committee and I expect it will be after the AGM, or again, as far as I'm aware, we have no date set for the AGM, so I expect sometime over there, perhaps June, perhaps July, and if you are still members of the committee and if I am still a member of the committee, we shall see each other then. Or in the absence of anything else to discuss, I will thank members and officers who have attended tonight.